All right, ladies and gentlemen, please stand, join with me in our pledge to our flagging country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for our prayer, please.
God, you are Creator, guide and watch over us. You use everything that happens for your purposes and glory. Help us to hear your voice and walk in your wisdom. Help us to honor you in what we think, say and do. Thank you for providing for our every need and so much more. Help us to care for others like you do and to forgive as we have been forgiven. Help us from our own selfishness. Help us to build a city that honors you and reflects your love for us. Thank you for being with us in every difficult circumstance and joyful breath. You are God and worthy of glory, honor and praise. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Frank. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting, November 2nd. Second item on the agenda is public comment, community announcements and recognitions, and we have a community announcement, I believe, nephew.
Good evening, everyone.
Identify yourself and your address, please. And you have five minutes.
I didn't hear you. What did you say?
Identify yourself and your address.
All right.
And you have five minutes.
Oh, my. I am Evelyn Nephew. Address, 524 East Perkins. Is it it?
Wonderful.
Gotcha. All right. I have two very important announce, community announcements that you need, that you all need to know about, and the community does too. There will be a fundraiser for the Friends of the Excelsa Library Historical Restoration Project. A company has donated some cowboy boots and cowgirl leather boots at the Old Grinko. And so, we're going, we had the sale once, but we have some boots that are left over, and you all need to come by and look at them and see what we have. So, there will be Saturday, Friday, November 5th, and Saturday, November 6th. First Baptist Church Fellowship Hall, 224 East Perkins, East Springer, Guthrie, Oklahoma, and the time is from 10:00 to 3:00. Reasonable donations are accepted. I think you'll like what you see, the Old Grinko, and if you can just Google "Old Grinko," you will see the type of boots that they make. I'm glad they chose us as part of the donation. Now, the annual benefit musical, gospel musical, for the General Daniels Thanksgiving Dinner will be held November 20th, First Baptist Church, 401 South Broad, and the proceeds will go toward the General Daniels Thanksgiving Dinner. It's at 6:00. Now, we couldn't do the dinner last year because of COVID, but it's, we didn't realize how great an impact that this dinner had on the community. And so, different people were asking us, where are we going to have it? Where are we going to have it? If you do, I want to donate. If you do, I want to help out. So, we looked at the numbers and decided, yes, we think we can do it this year with proper social distancing. And so, again, it's going to be, this will be the 22nd year. We got the American Legion, 123 North First Street in Guthrie, from 11:30 to 2:00, and it's open to the public, and we are welcoming back Chef Yvette Curry. Very wonderful chef and doing a very fine job. So, we want everybody to know it. This is a good platform to get the words out to the community. I'll see you there.
Very good.
Any questions to me?
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Nephew?
Thank you, Evelyn. Thank you very much.
Let me tell you, Guthrie's been real good on volunteering. I had a lot of people from the city staff and everybody to help volunteer. So, y'all just do that again.
All right. Great. Great. Thank you. Third item on our agenda is a consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the minutes of Public Works Meeting of October 19th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Submit your votes.
All those are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agenda item A. With that being last item on our agenda, adjourn our Public Works Authority Meeting. Call to order our City Council Meeting of November, November 3rd. I'm sorry, 2nd. Consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of City Council Meeting of October 19th, and B is the approval of Budget Amendment Number 3, I'm sorry, 2, amending the city project, capital project funds and the capital equipment funds. Approximately $118,000 being moved between those two funds. Entertained a motion?
Motion.
And a second. Have a motion and a second. Any other, any discussion or questions? Submit your votes.
All those are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then on consent agenda items A and B. Item number 3, discussion, possible action to approve Resolution 2021-31, establishing a cleaning deposit fee for the rental of Mineral Wells Park Pavilion. Leroy?
This does not change the rental amount. It just creates a refundable cleaning deposit. We've run into some issues where people do not want to leave it in the condition they find it, and this will just encourage them to clean up and remove staples and different things when they use the facility.
Moved or approved?
I think you need to double it.
Why not just change the rental rate and just not give any of it back? Increase the rental rate.
That's not how we traditionally do it. We can amend the resolution to do that if you would choose to do. This is based on a recommendation from our park board and park staff, and it's similar to what we do at Highland Hall. But you can do it any way you want.
We have a motion, I think. Do we now have a motion?
We can discuss it if you want to.
I know Long would throw a party down there and pay $100 to not have to clean it up and walk off. So, if it was doubled, they might be more inclined to clean it up, I think.
Two hundred bucks.
Would you not?
I'm just thinking, I mean, you would think that most people would go ahead and try to somehow pick up after themselves. But, obviously, people aren't. So, I would just...
I would think if you doubled it, you'd be less likely to want to clean it up. You said, "I'm doubled now, so they clean it up."
Leroy, is this a common, like, once every 10 times, or how often does this happen?
I don't have a number of how many times it's happened.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't mean that. I'm not trying to be specific about it. I'm just, how is it a major problem?
But it's getting to be more a regular occurrence, and this will just be an encouragement. If it doesn't work, we can do something else. But, you know, if you raise the rate, and they've already paid it, and they're not going to get any of it back, they're not going to care whether they clean up or not, and it causes us overtime and manpower. At least if they think they're going to get the cleaning deposit back and make some effort, we don't have as much overtime.
Don, you did make the motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, yeah? Okay. I know. Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All those are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then for Resolution 2021-31 to establish the cleaning deposit fee for Mineral Wells. Item number 4, discussion, possible action to approve Resolution 2021-32, adopting a community development block grant, Section 3 Plan, as required by the HUD Act of 1968. Leroy, we're going back and away.
The, the Section 3 Plan has been a requirement for HUD-funded programs since 1968. I'm not sure why Oklahoma Department of Commerce just realized that you're supposed to adopt this, but this year, they discovered that it's something that should be adopted. It's routine stuff that you have to adopt if you're going to use federal CDBG dollars.
So, it's really boilerplate stuff that's just being discovered, I guess?
Yeah, a little more than boilerplate. It seems where you encourage contractors to use lower-income employees, to give them an opportunity. Look at opportunities for contractors just getting started or subcontractors. So, it encourages the use of those funds to benefit more low and moderate, but it's not stringent in nature.
So moved. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All those are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to incorporate the, that Resolution 2021-32 into the block grant, Section 3. Item number 5, discussion, possible action to accept the 2021 Community Policing Development Accreditation Grant. Grant $75,000. Chief, you're one of, your group is one of few in the state that have this opportunity. Tell us about it.
We identified the grant and made application for it. Essentially, what we asked for is to hire someone, whether it be an employee or a contractor, to come in and help us rewrite our policies and procedures and get us state accredited. And accredited means that we have all the legal policies that were, that are required of us and that we follow all the best practices. It's, we figure it's probably going to take about two years. Our grant was, for $75,000, there is no required match, and like I said, we figured it will take about two years to get it done. We will work with O-MAG, our insurer, and the Oklahoma Association of Chiefs of Police to find a person to come in and help us through this process. At the end of the grant, I think the big selling point for the government was whoever we hire to help us, they have to come up with a plan, a written plan, that will help other departments in the state achieve the same goal.
Okay. So moved. Question?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, Chief? Submit your votes.
All those are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval for, to accept that community policing development grant. Item number 6, discussion, possible action regarding installation of security systems for City Hall and/or the Apothecary Garden.
This agenda item was requested by City Council member Jim Case. In your packet, I put, earlier this year, we had workshops, and different departments presented capital equipment needs, and I put in where our HR director had suggested upgrading the fire alarm system and the security system. We had a similar proposal from the police department. Those really didn't gain any traction as far as being a priority project this summer, so we didn't budget for those, but they were considered. Also put in, individuals may or may not know, but on Apothecary Gardens, the city owns the small area where the restroom and the pavilion building sits. The rest of the Apothecary Garden is privately owned by the same group that owns the Apothecary Garden.
So, how many cameras do you have not working?
I could use them. It's a lot.
How many do you have?
Couldn't say that either, though, because they, the majority of the cameras that I've been using the last seven years.
Dozen or more, probably.
More, yes. And we talked to, or I talked to a guy yesterday, just to kind of make sure that our pricing was still the same since, you know, everything's been going up, and the, the area that we're playing in now is closer between 120 and 130. So...
And that's for just security cameras?
How many?
Uh, it's for 35.
So, is there a grant for that? I like the grant, actually.
Yes. No, not that I found. Back not too long after, well, 9/11, and probably 10 years after that, there were tons of camera grants out there, and that might even be how you ended up with them here, because I know a lot of cities and counties did, but they just don't really fund that anymore. Or, I have not located the grants out there for them.
$135,000 for 35 cameras?
Between 120 and 130.
Now, what's that clue? Is that just cameras?
I'm sure it's...
Uh, cameras, DVR and labor.
And wired, too?
Yes, yes.
They're probably all...
It's the whole thing.
They're probably not wired cameras, are they?
Oh, yeah.
Are they?
They're all wired, should be.
So, is this prompted by the vandalism that's going on?
It was brought to my attention, and they sent me pictures of the vandalism on the, on the Apothecary Gardens. This is the first time I've seen this this year. And I, how many times have you guys cleaned that up, you know?
Uh, I'm sure twice, and maybe even third time.
So, it's any property that's being vandalized or the Apothecary Garden?
Just the, the buildings, the, the city property, yes.
Yes, okay.
All of it is being vandalized. I believe it.
I've seen it, but I didn't know whose, if it was the restrooms or if it was the...
Well, and, and over, I think over this last year, the, the restroom locks are controlled with, with electronic locks. We go in there and change them, and they're not as open, they're not open as often as they used to be because it was, it was causing the city a pretty pain to go in there and fix the vandalism off.
We, we only have the restrooms open on weekends and during special events now because vandalism had become quite an issue. I think we posted signs to let them know that our public restrooms in the lobby of the police department, when they are closed.
If they run out of places to pay, they come over here.
Sure.
To be quite frank, vandalism is a issue throughout town. I mean, we, we experienced it all, the restrooms in our parks. It's amazing the amount of man hours that we spend cleaning up after vandalism. One potential option that won't address the full problem, but I think when you have activity going on, it decreases the opportunity for, because they like to go places where there's not activity. I would like to look at taking some of the parking spots across the street by the Apothecary Garden and develop a mini food court and have a couple food vendors rotate in and out and fix the garden up so that you could go in the pavilion, where you could go have your lunch over there and buy from the food vendors, and then same thing in the evening, and maybe generate some more activity over there. Won't be a complete answer, but I think the more activity you have over there, the less likely you have vandalism. So, I'd be interested in your thoughts relative to doing something like that.
For sure.
Yes.
So, why don't you try to put that together and bring it, and so we can look at that? Can we do that? I like that idea.
We, we can work on it.
I just want to see something done to try to address it a little bit. It was brought to me, and that's why I'm right here. It's not like my major, my first concern for the police department.
But I think if you do the food trucks and have people be able to have their lunch there in the pavilion and the garden and in a nice setting, have dinners there.
It'll shut it down.
It, it will help deter that and be a positive thing for the community as well. Right now, we are lacking for some restaurants in our community variety, and so I think it would be a win both ways.
Okay. I understand. Hannah's going to save you from spending $120, $30, $30,000 right now, and you don't want to do it right now.
Sold.
But we don't have it in the budget to do it right now regardless. But that's free. What about the lighting, what about the lighting over there, Chief? Is that, is that enough to be a bit of a deterrent?
The what?
The lighting?
I, I would feel a lot better if I talked to Tenny about it, but there probably is something, probably a little bit better we could do without, do with the lighting without it costing the city a fortune. Just maybe put up another light. Because I think, well, the problem we've run into is we've run some pretty standard lights in there. They're super easy to access and super easy to break, and I think if we talk to Tenny, he could probably order some vandal-resistant housings. And, because when there's light back there, the guy, I mean, you don't typically near, you don't typically have near as many problems back there. So, if that's something, I'll, Leroy, I think we can probably talk to Tenny and see about that.
Okay. So, we've got a couple different opportunities to enhance the...
Address the issue, yeah.
Yeah, address that, that issue. So, I think we will table this item and, and work on those two, two issues that have been identified as improving the security over at Apothecary Garden as well as City Hall. Item number 6, City Manager Report.
Well, we've had a few light agendas. I just want to make sure the general public and, and the City Council realizes that we're not taking longer naps at City Hall, that we're working on some other projects. So, I thought I would just quickly highlight, in the last 30, 40 days, some of the reasons we've had lighter agendas is we're working on projects that don't necessarily or aren't mature to the point they come to City Council. Of course, our Human Resource Director resigned effective October 8th, took a, a job back at the state where she worked before in a different department. So, she gave us three weeks' notice and left on October 8th. So, the HR functions have been done by committee for a few weeks. I'm very appreciative of everyone that stepped up to help fill the gap. Even Kristen worked a couple Saturdays to assist us. We've been in the process of recruitment and selection of a new HR Director. Liz Botello, who started Monday of this week. Liz has over seven years of HR experience, including serving as, as the HR Director at the Goddard School, and most recently as a Talent Acquisition Manager at the Oklahoma City Community College. And we're thankful that we were able to find somebody qualified in, in such a short time. The executive assistant in my office, formerly Annette LaGranne, worked in my office. A majority of her time was with planning and issuing permits. When she requested to go part-time, we worked it out where she could be assigned to a part-time job in the Planning Department, which created an opening in my office for somebody that would actually work 100% of their time assisting me. We went through that recruitment selection process, and we have an individual starting on November 17th. So, I'll actually have a full-time assistant. Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport Joint Operating Agreement. We have been back and forth, working with Edmund officials and airport members to develop a more stable, long-term partnership agreement for the future that we think we're very close to finalizing. I've been working with the City Attorney and Cloud 9 Aviation on the documents to assign Hangar 2 and the fuel tank system from Spirit Wing Aviation to Cloud 9 Aviation. Under Economic Development, we've been working on the Film Soundstage Application, which will have a dual purpose. It will be a hands-on student lab training facility for Meridian Tech's Film Crew Academy, and it will also serve commercial filming. Target date for the City Council to receive that presentation and get the final blessing to submit the application, December 7th, should be on your agenda there. We've heard representatives from the Economic Development Administration is excited about getting that application. They do a lot of industrial parks, but this is kind of a unique economic development activity, and they're pretty excited about it. Justin Fortney is the Staff Project Lead in putting this project together. The industrial park application to have a shovel-ready, state-certified industrial park. Again, we're targeting December 7th to bring that to City Council for final approval to submit that application. Eric Harlow is the Staff Project Lead on that. Owen Field Softball Baseball Complex, softball and baseball complex. While we're waiting to get release of funds so we could start work on the three new fields that are funded by a million-dollar land and water conservation fund, we've been working on a proposal for corporate sponsorship to refurbish the existing softball fields. And you've seen some of our presentations to things like QuickTrip and stuff. We're going to do a similar presentation to go to corporate. And you've seen recently where Love Fields built, they're building a new softball complex. PayPal is, or not PayPal, Paycom is doing a lot of things with UCO. We're going to try to get some corporate sponsors to refurbish the existing fields, and we've been working on that. And the actual layout, design and cost estimates, a committee effort, putting together the promotional campaign. Sean DeRooney and Aaron Ryburn have been the lead staff working on that. Future City Council Workshops on Potential Revenue Enhancement Opportunities. In the process of putting together the background information and PowerPoints. Target dates, we would target December 7th for a workshop on garbage service rates and convenience center user fees. January 4th for looking at the motel tax and revenue earmark for sports field maintenance improvements and major maintenance. January 18th, a target date for a workshop on the Guthrie EMS fire billing rate structure. And then February 1st, a target date to have a presentation and discuss the potential of a public safety production district. Under the state funds, we got local funds, but the state also got $1.9 billion of funds through the American Recovery Act. We are putting together a package to apply for a million-dollar water main and valve replacement. May have some water tower maintenance in that, but $500,000 of state ARPA money, and we will match it with $500,000 of the ARPA money that we're getting direct. Of course, the lead on that, putting that project together is Tenny Maker and Bill Myers. We hope to have that in the next few weeks to present to you all. Still working on Highland Hall renovations and trying to get that project to bid. And we are working with some franchise agreements, ONG, OG&E, and then Vast Broadband or Blue Peak, working with them. They have recently got franchise agreements for broadband in some communities and working with them on a potential franchise agreement for Guthrie. So, that's not all the projects we have going on, but gives you an idea that behind the scenes, there's still a lot of activity going on, even though some of the last couple of meetings of City Council have been fairly light agendas.
Sounds good, Leroy. Lots of things happening beneath the water for that duct to be moving forward. So, thanks to you and your staff, Leroy, for keeping those things rolling. Item number 8, comments from City Council vice mayor Case.
For those who are interested, my wife's feeling really good. It appears they got all the cancer when they went into surgery. So, at least that's the appearance so far. We don't know for sure yet. She's, James had a hoil of the weekend. I'm sure he'll tell us about her in just a second, so I'll leave that one alone.
Okay. Well, good news on your wife's health.
Yes.
Councilman Long?
Yeah, we had a great weekend here in Guthrie. So, I really want to thank you too, Jonathan Stranger and Prairie Wolf and wandering folk spirits, actually, for investing so much in Guthrie, because we were able to have another Red Brick Night, smaller event in October, which was really nice. So, we appreciate people, businesses that invest in our community. So, thank you to them.
Councilman Taylor?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Williams?
Nothing bad, thank you.
Councilman Bothrowd?
Nope.
Councilman Chalm?
Two staff members there to thank.
Whoa.
Yeah. Councilman Chalm?
Yeah. Bothrowd here is getting in my way.
No, I have nothing.
Oh, okay. No, I'm just going to remind everybody, we're starting into the holiday season, and there's a lot of organizations and stuff here in town that'll be looking for help and donations as far as, you know, the Kiwanis and all the different organizations. So, everybody keep that in the back of your mind if there's a group you're looking to help or, or think about what you could do when they come and ask for help. This is one of those times of the year when everybody in the community wants help, and we try to give it to them. So, keep that on your mind.
Very good. Well, congratulations to the chamber and the downtown businesses who hosted the trick-or-treat for the kids on Friday and had streets... who hosted the trick-or-treat for the, the kids on Friday and, and had, um, streets blocked off. City did a great job on that. I understand it was one of the biggest, if not the biggest, numbers of, of kids and trick-or-treaters that they've had in a long, long time. And again, uh, Red Brick Frights, uh, was a, was a good success. And of course, football team won, so it was a, it was a really good, good evening, day and evening, all the way around. Couple things, Don, in, in following up on what you were talking about. We've got, uh, one of the biggest events, uh, of the year coming in the end of December with the Territorial Christmas, uh, for us, a signature event. If you haven't been on the website, go to the Territorial Christmas, Guthrie Territorial Christmas website for a number of reasons. They've got something new this year with their, uh, Christmas tots. Well, that's not the right, maybe it is. Territorial, territorial tots. And I think, I believe that there are four, um, young toddlers that are vying for the.
Territorial tot.
Territorial tot. And, and you can vote, you can vote by, by spending your dollars. And you can do that online as well as downtown. So that's a, that's a new thing. That's a, I think it'll be a fun thing. And they got some, of course, some just darling kids there. Also, the junior territorial governor, governors, there's three, uh, young, uh, two young ladies and a, a young man that are vying for that. And also voting, $1 equals one vote. So you can vote, there will be jars around downtown as well as, I believe, again, you can vote online. And then, of course, the territorial governor, uh, and there are four candidates for that prestigious position this year. Also, uh, for the lighted parade, which starts, um, oh gosh, I think it's, uh, the first week in December? Is that the, the, anyway, applications, uh, they're taking applications for the, uh, if you want to get a vehicle, a lighted vehicle in the parade. It takes an application through the Territorial, uh, Foundation, uh, Christmas Foundation. So get those applications in. It's lots of fun. One of the biggest parades that we have, uh, here in Guthrie. And it's at night. There you go. So go and do it, folks. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you.